For which it stands, one nation.
This meeting is being recorded.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I also want to state that the Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoak people who have lived and been sustained on this territory for more than 10,000 years. Thank you. Okay, the first order of business, does everyone have a copy of the agenda in front of them? We are looking to ratify our agenda for today. I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we ratify the agenda for today's meeting on February 18th, 2022.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Nope.
Okay. No, okay. Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on, Don, Don, go ahead, Don.
I'm sorry, I started speaking and I didn't realize that I was muted. Madam Chair, can you just explain why public comment is not at the beginning of the agenda?
Sure, yeah, I, so we've got a very hard stop at 2:00 PM today. I think many of us are in, from our offices, working today, so I want to make sure that we have enough time for everyone to vote and make sure that we have enough time to get all the information from the items on the agenda with respect to the Policy Subcommittee, the Board of Health Guidance, and there will be a discussion of all the public comment that we have received. So that's my, that's my reasoning.
All right. I know that everyone has received numerous communications from our public and people who have views on the issue to be addressed shortly on either side and I think we just want to make sure that we recognize that those views have been received and are being considered, at least by myself and I assume by the entire committee.
That's correct, thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. All right, I will call for the vote, Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes as well, so the agenda is ratified. So our first and only order of business today, it has been an interesting week. So thank you for making yourself available today. We, as you guys all know, we had a February 9th meeting, mere hours before, when the state lifted its, announced that it was going to end their mask mandate and return control back to our district. At that February 9th meeting, we had Dr. Parkinson there, our school physician. We had a lengthy discussion about the current state of affairs with respect to COVID. And we did talk about masking. You know, we weren't able to schedule a vote that night because of the lack of 48-hour notice, but I felt like we got some good information there. Matt, I'm not sure if you had a chance to watch that meeting, but I'm just gonna give you a couple of highlights. We were advised that we, as a district, will not likely achieve higher vaccination rates in our schools than, than what we have now. It's not likely to be a substantial increase in the near future. The Kenneth Coombs School remains the lowest with a 20% vaccination rate, though there are far more than that eligible for the vaccine. There's still no FDA approval for those five and under for a COVID vaccine. While the percentages are higher for Quashnet and MMHS, we're hovering around 50% district-wide. There's been a lot of variability in that across, not just Cape Cod, but Massachusetts. There, it could be some comfort in the numbers that they provided with staff, however, which indicated that roughly 95% of our staff are vaccinated in the district. And of course Barnstable County has a fairly high vaccination rate in this, in this upwards of 70%. Dr. Parkinson also advised at our February 9th meeting that with our surveillance testing, and I hope I don't get these names wrong, Stacy, so forgive me, the Tuesday testing that we do and the at-home testing program that we also have in place where families can opt in and get tests to use at home, we should be able to detect a resurgence that would allow us to react and, you know, rethink some of these strategies. You know, I think everyone knows that in this day and age right now, everything's kind of subject to change depending on when new information emerges. So in the interim, while we're in this low incidence period, as he referred to it, I think he called it like a low trough or something, he suggested that it was an appropriate time to think about removing masks. Our administration, the superintendent, also voiced their support for a change at that February 9th meeting. And a few days later, on February 11th, the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, MIAA, announced that Massachusetts student athletes, coaches, and officials will no longer be required to wear face masks for indoor activities starting on February 28th. So on Monday of this week, which feels like a long time ago already, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees shared and distributed an updated mask face covering policy for all districts to use that was consistent with the governor's announcement. We made minor edits to that to make it appropriate to Mashpee. We referred that to our Policy Subcommittee and also the Mashpee Board of Health. Their meeting was last night, and so we scheduled this meeting as the very soonest that we could react, given all that information, and, and schedule something for this committee to vote on prior to February break. Last night, the Mashpee Board of Health voted 3-0 to support our revised draft policy. And I think that summarizes everything. I just wanted to give Patty an opportunity, obviously, to talk about the additional measures that remain in place. If you want to touch on that now?
Yeah, so I just want to assure our families, our students, and our staff that we are going to continue to have some of the mitigation strategies in place that we've had all along. So the buildings will continue to be disinfected daily. The hand sanitizer stations that are everywhere and outside of all the classes will continue to be something we encourage all students and staff to use regularly. Our HVAC systems, which were inspected and upgraded because of COVID, will continue to have the MERV 13 filters and have the airflow set to be 100% fresh air flow. And I think the biggest, that Nicole touched on, is that surveillance testing on Tuesdays, which everyone is eligible to participate in. I think last Tuesday, we had 192 participants and there were no positives out of the 192. And then also, like Nicole mentioned, the at-home testing option where we can provide the kits to families and we're encouraging staff, and we could, families as well, to take, to participate in the Tuesday testing and again, and then do the at-home testing on a Friday. So then you're getting sort of a double check each week would be a good way for us to, you know, pick up any asymptomatic positive people. And then reminder to everyone that we still have the expectation that if you have any of the symptoms on our daily symptom checker, that you are staying home and you're going to continue to have access to our District Nurse Coordinator, Stacy Shackle, ongoing and probably into next year as well. So if there's any questions or guidance that a family needs or a staff member needs, we still have that available as well. I think you're muted, Nicole.
Sorry, it's always somebody. So I thank you for that. So I think you have the policy handy?
Yeah.
So just, and I'm gonna just want to point out that we continue to, we cultivate an environment of mutual respect at Mashpee Public Schools and continue to support those students and adults who may choose to wear a mask. This policy continues to recommend face coverings for those unvaccinated under individuals or who are immune compromised. Oh, actually, I should look at the actual policy. Can you make it a little bit bigger? Thank you. Yeah, is that better for everybody? Okay. So let's see, where was I? In addition, so, and vaccinated individuals may also wear a face covering that covers their nose and mouth if desired. Students have to wear masks on buses, masks are going to be required in all health offices, and those returning from a five-day quarantine must follow strict mask use, so you can see the specifics there. And I guess the last thing I just want to say is, you know, thank you for making yourselves available today. I think it's important to address this issue now so that we don't continue to have this ongoing angst that's sort of in our community right now. I'd like to sort of make sure that we're very clear about what we intend to do before everyone departs on February break later today. So with that, is there anyone who would like to ask a question, comments?
Madam Chair, similar to the motion that I made at the previous meeting, I think it's important that the committee waive our, our policy in regard to policy adoption. This is policy BGB. This meeting was not set up on a emergency basis. Our normal procedure would be, would have been just being distributed widely as part of a previous agenda and then discussion and reading recommendations from the Policy Subcommittee and the superintendent. So just to make sure we're all on safe ground here, I would like to make a motion that we waive policy BGB in regard to this issue.
You're muted, Nicole.
Thanks. There's so many people on, I'm trying to limit the background noise. All right, Don, thanks for that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brian. So this is just a vote to waive our, you know, the advance notice and the, the second read that's typical of this type of policy change. Any further discussion?
I just want to point out, you know, even though we're waiving it, we did at least get the Policy Subcommittee to review it this morning. So, you know, we, we felt that the changes were, were good and I think we just added the link to that last bullet point for the Federal Public Health Order about school buses. I think we, do we get that added?
What I did was I checked both of, it's included in both the first reference and the second reference.
Yeah, because that was the only question, was making sure we have that information readily accessible for those who were unsure of that particular bullet item. But Brian, did you want to add anything from our meeting this morning?
No, I feel a lot more comfortable now that.
Hang on one second, Brian. Let's, uh, let's take a vote on this motion first, please.
Sorry.
Okay, that's right. I just want to.
No, sorry, I didn't mean to jump the gun there.
All right, so any further discussion on the motion?
Nope.
Okay, great, Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you for that. Now, back to the Policy Subcommittee.
Brian, you want to go?
No, we were just saying that we feel a lot more comfortable knowing that the Board of Health also recommends this policy. It makes me feel a lot more comfortable to move forward with the proposed policy. And that's kind of what I was looking for before, we can make, you know, a better decision to move forward, so I'm fine and I think it's a good policy.
Great, thank you. Okay, so does either of you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we adopt policy EBCFA as presented.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so the revised policy is now open for discussion. Matt, do you have any questions or comments you want to share?
No, I reviewed everything that you guys have been sent through the emails and, you know, I mean, everything, we're essentially just following all the guidance that's already out there, so, yeah.
Thank you. Don, anything further? I can't see you now, hold on. There you are.
I'm over here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Two, two things. The effective date of the motion is what? Is it today?
Oh, no, that's good, good clarification. Yeah, so we want this to be effective February 28th.
That was my assumption, was that it was going to be the 28th or the statement, the state regulation, yes.
So do you want to amend your motion?
Probably good for clarity, Kathy.
Sure, yep, so I'll amend the motion that we approve policy EBCFA regarding face coverings to be put into effect as of Monday, February 28th, 2022.
Thank you. All right, we'll keep Brian as the second, are there further questions?
So the only other question then that I have is in regard to those individuals who did respond to this policy change.
Yeah.
In a nega-, in a negative manner. And I'd like to hear the superintendent's response to how we address those concerns, please.
So we heard from a couple of staff members, and there might have been a few parents as well in terms of the general concern for the safety of others when we remove the masks and not being able to, you know, know who or who isn't vaccinated. Hopefully, everyone who's not feeling well does choose to stay home. But I think having the option of continuing to wear masks for those individuals who are fearful and also making sure that we offer as many supports as we can. If it's a staff member, we can look at things and how they're arranged in a classroom. And if it's a family member, we will work with that family as well as Stacy to see what we can put in place that would help alleviate some of their worry and their concern about having their students in a environment where no one is masking. But I will also say that everyone, and it says in the policy, but all students and staff can continue to wear masks if it's their choice.
Right, we're, basically, everyone can wear a mask, there's no stigma if they choose to. But this just removes the requirement that they have to wear a mask. The other, just briefly, and I mean briefly, can you just touch upon what we're doing from a testing perspective and what, how that is continuing and what we're doing to support our families and students? And in particular regarding the February break and what we have provided to the families.
Sure, so on Tuesdays, every Tuesday when we do our surveillance testing, that's a PCR test. And then what we've offered to all of our families at home is an antigen test. And any family that indicated they wanted to have a test to use during February vacation prior to the return, we have made those available, although today is the very last day, so they might not have opted into that program. And also, all staff members have been provided with tests to use prior to coming back on the 28th. I know there's a general fear of, you know, the vacation and everybody going different places. But I think what Nicole had said and Dr. Parkinson, you know, we are in an environment of, of high vaccination rates in terms of the community. And hopefully that's going to create enough of a safety net for some of our non-vaccinated individuals.
All right, the last, last thing I promised that I have to say, don't laugh too hard, Nicole, is, yeah, I'm supportive of making this change based upon the evidence and the situation that prevails today. And what we've seen in the downward trends and what, you know, I saw in the Cape Cod Times that Mashpee had the second lowest rate, positivity rate here on the Cape. So we definitely have headed in the right direction. And I think this change is warranted based upon the situation, what we've seen in the trends that we've experienced here locally and on a more national or regional and national perspective. We've gone through an unprecedented epidemic here. Hopefully, we are on the cusp of moving back towards some resemblance of normalcy. But from my perspective, this committee could change this policy if the situation warranted it in the future. So I think we're out of, hopefully out of the woods now. I've got my fingers crossed that we don't have to go back. But, you know, we've learned a lot from what we've gone through and I think this is headed in the right direction. So with that, I'm done, Madam Chairman, or Chair.
Can I add one, one clarifying piece that Nurse Stacy just texted me? The staff members had to opt in to have the testing program during vacation. So not all staff members choose to, chose to take a test kit.
Gotcha. All right, yeah. I also should, before I let you jump in there, Brian, I, Don, you reminded me to just acknowledge, and I think I take this for granted because all the committee members I know have seen this correspondence. So we did get, you know, roughly a dozen emails from different parents, a few staff members that I assembled in that Google Sheet for all of you guys so that you would see those sort of, they wouldn't get lost in your inboxes, so you have those. We also received yesterday morning a petition that was signed by a number of parents and Mashpee town residents that you guys all had access to. So I just want to acknowledge receipt of those. And, and now, Brian, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to know if we could get an update from our student rep. I see Skylar on and we've heard a lot from parents and teachers and stuff. I just wanted to hear from the students and how they feel about it, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, sure. Skylar, are you in a place where you can speak to us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, she's on the fly, Brian.
I'm in the cafeteria, I'm here.
Okay, all right. So is there anything that you want to add?
Um, I think that everything that's been said so far is really good. I think that the student body just pretty collectively agrees that if anybody wants to still wear it, they're totally, totally comfortable to do that. No one's going to judge, it's just that those of us who want to remove them want to be able to. We've seen that the rest of our towns around us have and I think it would be really good for the ending of our year. And Mashpee, as you guys keep saying, has a lot of stuff in place with testing and like we have the resources now that we didn't a year ago. And so the students in general are really hopeful and we want to be able to take them off after break.
Thank you, Skylar.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so I think with that, I don't see any more hands raised from the committee, so I'm gonna call for the vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I switched up the order on you, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, I vote yes as well, it's unanimous. Um, so thank you, Skylar, for jumping on quickly like that. And then just a reminder to all of us to follow Skylar's excellent example and be kind to each other as we move forward, what is certainly going to be a stressful period for everyone in this community. And we want to remind ourselves that what we're doing this for is our students and the good of our community. So I'm grateful to be on this committee with those of you who are, who share that commitment with me. So it is 1:43, I think. We still have time for public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, we have one more agenda item and that is to discuss whether we would like to keep or remove the March 2nd meeting that we added, where we originally thought we were going to be doing this. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm, that we cancel the March 2nd meeting of the Mashpee School Committee.
Great, thank you. Motion by Brian, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Matt. Any discussion on this item? Okay. Thank you, I'll call for the vote, Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, I vote yes as well, sorry, that's 5-0. Okay, so now we're, so we have a little time left for public comments. We have a chat in your, for those who don't know where that is, it's at the bottom of your screen. In the chat, you can sort of raise your hand, so to speak. Or I guess you could do that with, no, we'd like you to enter your name in the chat because we were worried we wouldn't see it if your hand was raised. So if you could just identify yourself. I believe Mary Kate is available to field those. We only have 15 minutes left in this meeting, so based on how many we have, Mary Kate, we can either do a two or three-minute limit on folks.
Currently, there is no one in the chat.
Okay, let's just give it a minute and see if anybody, if anybody turns up. Still good?
Still good. Oh, here's, yes, there is one here. I will read it to you. "At kids dentist appointments, but want to say thank you so much for lifting this mandate. I cannot wait for my children to be able to return to school and have a sense of normalcy." Thank you. And from Emery, oh, hi, Mary Kate, what about pre-K who cannot get vaccinated? Will there be a policy in place?
Patty, do you want to handle that?
Not at this time, there will not be a policy in place for preschool.
Or the policy that we have in place covers preschool, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they will not be, the question is whether to require preschool students to mask and that will not be a requirement.
So the, the very same policy that we just passed would, would cover all of that?
From Nicole Britton, "I'm so happy, these kids and staff have been so amazing. So glad they will be able to breathe freely."
Thank you, Nicole. Any other comments?
That's it for now.
Okay.
You, Ashley Rockefeller.
Thank you, all right. So we did set one record today, this is the most well-attended school committee meeting I've ever been a part of. So we have that going for us. And again, thank you guys for being available, I'm going to close public comment. And since we have no items remaining on the agenda, I'm going to adjourn. Thank you all very much, enjoy your holiday.
Thank you.
No, we dispense with the agendas, we don't have to vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Have a good one.